Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here tonight and call the meeting of the Charlton Select Board to order. It is October fourteenth, 2025, at 6:30 PM. We're at the Town Hall, Meeting Room One. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by Charlton Cable Access TV on Spectrum TV, Channel 191, and recording available on the YouTube channel for Charlton TV. Any member of the public who wishes to record a meeting first must notify the Chair. We'll move on down. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda would be announcements. Sasha?
The special town meeting is October twentieth, 7:00 PM, and it's in Charlton Middle School. Effective today, traffic pattern changed. Stafford Street and Center Depot Road has been converted to a four-way stop. The annual Trickle Treat Parade from the library to the Town Hall and then the Senior Center will be on Thursday, October thirtieth, at 11:00 AM. Meet in the children's room, and you can sign up on the library website. Town-wide Trickle Treat is Friday, October thirty-first, and that's from 5:00 to 7:30 PM. Real estate and personal property taxes are due November third. Charlton veterans are invited to call the Senior Center for information on the Veterans Lunch on next month. We would like to honor you. The number is (508) 248-2231. If you are a senior sixty-year-old class in need and would like to be an anonymous recipient for the library's giving trip, please contact Charlie Boys at the Charlton Senior Center at that same number at (508) 248-2231. And there is a grand opening for Monarch Orchard Farm, and that's October twenty-fifth, 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There will be a barbecue, drinks, music, raffles, highlights, and vendors. Everybody, welcome. Support local business.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item would be open forum. If there's anyone here which is to speak, now is the time to come on up. If you're on the agenda and you have a scheduled appointment, you can wait until then. But did you have something other than, did you want to come up?
No.
Okay. Excellent. Moving on down to the approval of minutes. We need to vote on the board vote for the minutes of the regular meeting dated September twenty-third, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. An aye, so three ayes and one abstain. Moving on down, we will go to appointment and resignations. Board deliberation of vote appointments. The first one, appointment to the Cultural Council.
All right. Attaches a talent bank form. Lisa obviously can be appointed to the Cultural Council. The Cultural Council would recommend the appointment. Her term expiration date will be June thirtieth, 2028. Recommend the board make the appointment.
So move to make the appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And Lisa's not here? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If motion passes, it's unanimous. Thank you, Lisa. Next would be another appointment. Andrew?
Yes. So attach your talent bank forms from Linda Walker, Rulene Murray, and Ann McIntosh, seeking to be appointed to the Housing Production Plan Steering Committee. This plan will be the community's proactive strategy and development of affordable housing and working with our office and the Planning Board. I'd recommend the board make the appointments. This would be for an ad hoc committee, therefore the appointments would expire upon the completion of the duties assigned.
All right. Entertain a motion?
So moved. We're doing all three at the same time?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
That should be interesting.
Yeah. Thank you to all three. Next item is another appointment. Traffic Constable. Andrew?
Chief Dowd is asking the board to appoint the following as traffic constables. Louis P. Massey, Jr., Troy J. Casper, Sr., and John G. White. I'd recommend the board make the appointments. Their term, the appointments or their term would expire June thirtieth, 2026.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion?
None.
All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. It's unanimous. Congratulations. And now we'll move on to board resignations.
Attaches a letter of resignation from Megan Campbell as a per deh dispatcher effective October fourth, 2025. The board should accept her resignation and a letter thanking her for her service to the town is in your sign folder.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
None. With regrets?
With regrets. Absolutely. Absolutely. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. It's unanimous. Okay. Thank you very much, Megan. And moving on down, we have this, another resignation. Andrew?
Attaches a letter of resignation from John Holbrook as cemetery laborer effective October third, 2025. The board should accept his resignation. Letter thanking him for his service to the town is in your sign folder.
So move. With regret.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Unanimous. And thank you for serving. Okay. Since we're a little early for the public hearings, if you're following along on the agenda, we're going to skip over scheduled appointments and move down to action items number five. Special alcoholic beverage license and special event permit for Monarch Orchards.
Attaches an application for a special alcoholic beverage license for wine and malt beverages from Elena Tomer for the grand opening of Monarch Orchard's forty-four Old Worcester Road to be held on October twenty-fifth, 2025, and November twenty-second, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Also attaches a special event permit for the same dates and times. The applications were forwarded to the police chief, building commissioner, and fire department for review, which all have approved. Per the board's policy, the dates on the alcoholic beverage license should include the day before the event to allow alcohol to be delivered, the day of the event, and the day after the event to allow any alcohol left over to be picked up.
Do we have a motion?
Justin want to come up?
Yeah. I was going to have one. I was going to have one. I got this. I didn't forget you.
Well, you never know what they're going to say. We might, when we vote no.
Hello, everybody. My name's Justin Tomer. I'm actually the other part-owner of Monarch Orchard. Me and my wife bought the orchard. We actually closed on it August twenty-ninth, so we're six weeks in. We've been, you know, taking care of it for the last five months, and we're finally getting to a point where, you know, we would like to welcome the community to enjoy what we have done so far and come and see where we're at now, and then basically just see what we could come up with as a community and everybody to come and see it and see the growth of what it's going to become.
Thank you.
And that's two days, right? That's October twenty-fifth and November twenty-second.
We put down both dates. We just didn't know if we were going to have a rain date, so we wanted to cover, yeah, we wanted to cover both options that we did have.
Smart.
Any insurance in place?
Exactly. You never know what the weather up here. We know that.
Again, we wish you the best.
We could be in shorts November twenty-second.
Very glad you're in town.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any comments before we make motion? In a second?
No.
No. No. Excited to see what's going on.
Yeah. It is exciting.
Well, hopefully we get to see you, everybody, come up on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah. There's quite a recent history with that orchard in this town. I'm excited to see you guys kick it off.
Yeah. And we're excited. You know, we've had some wonderful outpour of support from the town, and a lot of our friends and family have come and seen where we've been, and a lot of people from Charlton have come up and have given that little support and definitely gave us that motivation to continue to push through and try to get it back, which is very nice.
Yeah.
That's awesome. That's great. Great to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Thank you for being here tonight as well. Appreciate it.
No problem.
All right. Now can I call for a motion?
Madam Chair, you may.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
We have the motion to move as written. Do we have to read the whole thing?
No.
Should we now? So other motion as written.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the permit as written. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. It's unanimous. Well done. Wish you well, and may the sun shine.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Have a good, super nice.
Yeah.
We're still early. We've got five minutes, so we'll just, for those wondering, it's very important we keep the public hearing at the scheduled time, so we will, did you want to do your report? Can you do it in five minutes?
Sure. All right. I'll jump down to my report.
No pressure. We'll move it down to the Town Administrator Report. Andrew?
All right. With the fire substation, so concrete slab for the apparatus bays in the process of being poured. This week, exterior framing is scheduled to begin with framing scheduled to be completed prior to the end of the month. Be sure to check out the progress when you attend town meeting next week. You know, you'll have to drive by. With special town meeting approaching next Monday, we're compiling additional information for residents to learn more about what will be presented. This information is currently available at www.townofcharlton.net/stm25. So it is also a direct link on the main page for those looking for additional information. As previously discussed, the new four-way stop intersections have been implemented at Stafford Street and Center Depot Road, as well as Center Depot Road and City Depot Road slash HK Davis Road. Those are both effective today, so please take care of navigating the new traffic pattern at these intersections. And tomorrow, I'll be down at the Senior Center between 10:30 AM and 11:30 AM for a coffee with the seniors, so feel free to stop by and chat about things that are happening around town.
That's pretty good.
You should red slow them.
I know.
All right. So what else can we do? Student report. Student, oh, how about the student report? We have a new student with us tonight from Bay Path, and I'm just going to look at you and let you take it away. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and give a report if you have one? Welcome.
I'm Natalie Perrin. I'm a Bay Path freshman, and I report, "The Cosmo students are selling pink hair extensions at lunch for $5 each to raise money for breast cancer awareness. Freshmen just finished up their third week of shop exploratory. Homecoming last week was a hit. Everyone enjoyed themselves and loved the theme. Freshmen are all working hard to get their first choice shop. Most freshmen want plumbing this year. Fall sports teams are doing very well this season, with only a few losses for the girls' JV soccer team and volleyball team. All our sports teams are doing great and playing hard. Reminders: Picture retakes are on Wednesday, the fifteenth. They will be held in the cafeteria. Come down at 1:00 PM for your retake if needed. Any freshmen that want to switch a shop, if they have needs to schedule an appointment with your guidance counselor to talk about it. There is no guarantee you will get to switch. All sports players must wait till the afternoon bell rings at 2:20 to go to the locker room, unless otherwise stated."
Very well done. Thank you so much.
Very good. And welcome aboard.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Andrew, we're going to go back up to our scheduled appointments on number four. First one being six forty-five. Andrew?
All right. Six forty-five, we have proposed house numbering change for seventy-seven E. Bailey's Road. At the board's September ninth, 2025, meeting, you were made aware that in review of pending building permit applications, issues related to the numbering of addresses at seventy-seven E. Bailey's Road and ninety-eight Old Worcester Road were identified when assigning new street numbers. The board voted to set public hearing for tonight for both addresses. Notices to both homeowners were sent by certified mail and received. We have scheduled the proposed house numbering change for seventy-seven E. Bailey's Road for six forty-five PM. Our office and the Building Inspection Services Department have spoken with the property owners of seventy-seven E. Bailey's Road, seeking voluntary cooperation to renumber their home to eighty-one E. Bailey's Road, which have not been agreed upon. They were also supplied with a street numbering policy so that they may offer a compliant alternative. This request is necessary for public safety, administrative clarity, and compliance with municipal addressing protocols. Should the board approve the request, we have offered the homeowner's assistance with the following. If the town will pay and file the appropriate paperwork with the Registry of Deeds with the address change, the town will have a letter for the homeowner to assist them with the address change. The town will replace their existing mailbox and house numbers, and the town will have a reflective address sign and post made with their address number for safety response purpose. It is recommended the board approve the request with the motion provided below. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the public hearing notice as published in the Southbridge Evening News and send to the homeowner.
Okay. I'll now open the public hearing by reading the information that was in the paper. Proposed house numbering change public hearing. The Charlton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October fourteenth, 2025, at six forty-five PM at the Charlton Town Hall, Meeting Room One, Thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass, to discuss and consider altering the address of seventy-seven E. Bailey's Road. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. The hearing is now open. Ms. Damascus.
Good evening, and Mr. Golis has outlined what has happened in this process so far. You know, I will reiterate that our policy says that we understand that changing of house numberings is a problem for people, but public safety and being able to correctly address within the nine-one-one system for first responders and emergency services is a priority. I provided the board with the various maps showing the areas for the property. I have the large coin added map for you, but it's, we don't have enough numbers. And back in 2001, when the permits were issued for the flesh house, someone made an error and did not number that house properly and did not allow for sufficient numbers in between existing houses.
Thank you, Ms. Damascus.
First of all, this is being caused by seventy-three E. Bailey's Road, is my understanding. They have an ancillary lot, which is causing this, which could easily be changed to seventy-three A. Also, in between, before seventy-three is sixty-one, and there's no buildable lots before that. So I'm not sure why seventy-three is not changing their number and why they're not being forced to change their number, and I am. About three or four lots down from the, from the address that is causing this. So seventy-three has, what could be seventy-three A has a buildable lot. I'm not sure why they just don't have it changed that way instead of, you know, it just seems like an unnecessary hardship for me and my family to change our number when there's so many other options.
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
In looking at the number assignments across the street, which is important for identification as emergency services look, seventy-seven is improperly numbered for that. The use of A or B in our policy is reserved for duplex homes with single driveways. Seventy-three aligns with the house numbering across the street permit, so that is how I came up with that seventy-seven should be renumbered eighty-one.
You could say that about half the streets in town, that the numbers aren't sequential to each other across the street from each other. This is very arbitrary. The number before seventy-three is sixty-one, okay? Tell me how that lines up. There's a river in between them. There's no buildable lots. Make seventy-three change their number. They're the ones causing this. They have an ancillary lot on their property, okay? Ancillary, well, it's not ancillary, but it's buildable. Why am I three lots down having to change my number when I'm not the cause of this problem, and there's so many other solutions? There's five numbers between sixty-one and seventy-three that could be, that seventy-three could change their number to.
Under.
Seventy-one, sixty-nine, sixty-seven, sixty-five, sixty-three.
Okay.
Let's figure it out.
So we, we have the recommendation from the building inspector. We have your statement, and now unless there's something new to be said from either of you, I'm going to entertain, you know, we're going to talk amongst the board members?
I'd like to ask another question, okay? What, what other options were explored before this? Did you think about seventy-three A? Did you think about seventy-three and a half?
So I believe.
Did you think about sixty-nine, seventy-one?
I believe, one person at a time, please. I do understand your frustration, but we'll just kind of keep it so one person's not talking over the next. I believe Ms. Damascus addressed that in his, in the statement that he made to us a few minutes ago, but what I'd like to do.
I didn't hear any other solutions.
What I'd, what I'd like to do right now is just open it up. I know, Mr. Singer, you wanted to say something. Yeah.
Do we know the owners of the parcel being built? Are they the same people who own seventy-three?
No, they're not.
So it's a lot owned by someone else.
It's owned by Jonah Fosher, who I've spoken to numerous times, seventy-three. He says he has no problem turning that lot next to him that is not numbered yet to seventy-three A.
And so why not? Did you have something?
Yeah. So Ms. Damascus, so what would that be downsides to what he just said, Mr. Flech?
As I explained, when I looked at the numbering sequence across the street, keeping numbers aligned the best as possible is the most beneficial outcome. Seventy-three A in our policy is reserved for duplexes and single driveway properties.
A lot of duplexes in trouble.
Okay.
Is there a seventy-five?
Yes, there is. Seventy-five would be that, the lot where the new house is being built.
But there's no seventy-five. It goes seventy-three to seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I mean, I have an opinion, but no comments.
You can share it.
If you want. I'm actually going to be a no vote on this, and I appreciate everything that's gone into it. I think that there are times where we hope that if it's not too much on a resident, that they would want to work with the town. But there are times where things do require a bit more, a bit more work or effort on someone's part, and if a resident isn't going to want to do that, just like with easements and everything else, I'm loathe to do things if there are, in my own mind, other options. And with all due respect to the work you've done and everything else, I just think there are other options, and I don't want to force the resident to do that. I'm only one out of five, but that's just my personal opinion. I'd rather see it made into seventy-three A, seventy-five. Other changes? To your point, sir, I can't give you examples today, but I do know what you're talking about as far as, it's something throughout town. We do the best we can to work with people, and we hope you will do the best you can to work with us. I look at it as now there are other costs involved. It's not just having a letter written for a resident, it's having to get new driveways and having to get new passports, and that could be a problem. So it's actually more difficult, not impossible. And this isn't rocket science. I don't want to make it rocket science, but I do think there are other options that I would rather see the town pursue. That's just my.
And we are paying for all of the changes that needs to be done. The town is paying for all of this.
We will pay for the recording at the Registry of Deeds. We will provide a list of all the people that they need to contact. We will provide a address number for the street. We'll provide new address numbers to put on the house. We'll provide new address numbers to put on the mailbox. And in this case, the applicant has a rock that's etched with seventy-seven. We can provide them what they plaque to cover that seventy-seven with the new assigned, proposed assigned number.
For the record, too, I did the research beforehand. This hasn't been done in fifteen-plus years in this town, okay? There are so many other options to be explored here before making this change. You know, the point is not what, you know, people paying for it for us. It's the, it's the legwork that has to go into all of this, you know? It is, it is a hardship, and like I said, I would really like other options explored here. Thank you.
One, two more seconds. I get the A, B, and actually there are several duplexes being built in the town, so I agree with this, but the seventy-five, was this the seventy-seven or seventy-five number? What's, what's the problem with that?
Between, we have a house that's address number seventy-three. We have three lots in question here. The next number sequentially from seventy-three is seventy-five, which is a lot that has accessory structures on it to seventy-three, but is a buildable lot. The house that is being, currently being constructed would be numbered seventy-nine, and that would put us out of sequence by having seventy-seven to eighty-five.
So the, so the lot next to seventy-three, the one that you're calling seventy-five, right there, that one doesn't have a number yet, okay? That would be seventy-three A. So that's, the one that is, has a house being built on it right now would be seventy-five, and then that would be seventy-seven, okay? Now, if there's any, that, that lot right there, seventy-three, okay? The guy already said, I've already spoken to him, I have a text message from him. He said he'd like to even combine that lot at some point, but why now do we have to make this motion here when there's no guarantee he's going to build on that? Leave this for the future. There's other numbers that he can work with between sixty-one and seventy-three when the time comes, okay? The lot next to me that's being built on, that one's seventy-five. I'm seventy-seven. They're all in order. You know, this, simple, simply put, there's way more options for seventy-three than going the other way to seventy-seven.
I think you've made your point. Thank you. Thank you very much, David.
Thank you. Just an idea. As far as sequence goes, and I understand Kurt's concern, and I'm sure fire and police. But I always say that we have the best and the brightest, police and fire, which means I also think they can count. That said, couldn't the town, if we're going to spend any money, wouldn't it be cheaper to have the town just go out and buy those big red reflective numbers that we already asked the residents to buy so they can find the house and pay for a seventy-seven and stick it in front of their mailbox? The red reflect seven-seven, no fire police is going to miss when you come down the street. The lights are going to hit. It's going to be seventy-seven. You've got, you'd have to be blind to not see those. And then that, there's no question that somebody couldn't be able to find that house. It's just an idea to alleviate the sequencing problem about people having to dispose and maybe count and find a house. Put the red seventy-seven reflector out front. You're not going to miss it. And that's, you know, ten, fifteen minutes worth of work. Get the metal, you know, iron in the ground, sign the pole, but.
It's always Google Maps, too.
Yeah. I just, again, I go back to minimizing the duress we may put on residents, unless it's really an absolute disaster, and I just don't think we're rising to the point of lives at stake right now to, to make this bigger than there are simpler approaches.
Yeah.
And I won't say another word on it because I'm just going to repeat myself.
Kurt, did you want to add anything? Kurt, did you want to add anything?
I, I'm not, I have stated my case, and I believe that it is the best course of action.
Chief, do you, any logistics? Can you leave your opinion here?
Do you want to give? Come on down. Put you in the hot seat.
You didn't want to come down for this?
Yeah, sure.
I don't like it.
Uh, yeah. So, my opinion is, is as the fire chief, it is important for us to have house numbering across from each other sequentially. So I'll start with that. I don't know anything about this. I, I, I didn't know that this was on the agenda, so. So it is important, it is, to this gentleman's point, it is, sometimes it is common in, in this town and in other towns that not always the house numbering is opposite each other, right? So sometimes fourteen on one side doesn't line up necessarily with thirteen on the other side, right? Ideally, it'd be great because we may see a mailbox on one side that's thirteen, and we know that, well, thirteen, fourteen should be on the other side, right? So we do prefer for house numbering to be sequentially. We don't like when house numbering jumps because it makes things difficult. And there are some streets in this town where the house numbering does jump, and I applaud the building commissioner's attempt to fix this. And I understand what he's trying to do, and I understand what he's trying to prevent, is as we have lots that are happening where there's a big lot, and there is this separation that is going to occur, is he's trying to prevent the possibility of something happening by saying, hey, there's a chance that we're going to run out of a number, so let's change it, right? To this gentleman's point, Mr. Meskis, which I was involved with this policy writing, myself and the police chief were involved with this policy writing, is we put a lot of effort into this policy to say A and B and C are reserved for single driveway duplexes. And that does make things a lot easier for us. So when we know that we're going to an address that's twenty-three A, that tells us right away that it's a single driveway duplex. So it makes things a little bit easier for us that we know right away. Where if, in this particular instance, on E. Bailey's, if we knew that we were going to seventy-five A, that would make things a little bit more confusing for us because, are we going to a duplex? Or nope, it's actually a house that got wedged in between two houses, right? So I wouldn't support that. However, to this gentleman's point, he does make a very valid point is to say, well, could we go left? Could we say, could we go the other way? However, to Mr. Meskis's point, all we're doing then is we're taking the responsibility of changing this gentleman's number, and we're now going to have to have a public hearing and bring in somebody else to say, we want you to change your number. Now, again, if that other individual says, hey, I don't mind changing my number, so be it. If that other individual says, I don't care, I'll change my number, perfect. You know, but to Mr. Meskis's point, someone has to change their number because there's not enough numbers here to fit the number of houses in there. So if we're going to have the numbers all line up, there's, there's a lot in between that needs to be fixed. That's all. So I applaud the, I applaud Mr. Meskis's point that there's a house being built right now, and then there's a potential, and there is a potential. So I think what he's trying to do is, let's get ahead of the game before somebody all of a sudden, six months from now or a year from now, says, hey, I want to put something on this lot now, now what are we going to do? He's just trying to get ahead of the game and say, let's just change it now while this house needs a house number right now because according to the policy, we have to assign a house number right now because the building permit has got issued. So that's the reason why it's before him, is because the policy was written the way it's written is the house number is up right now, so.
Well, thank, thank you, I appreciate you-
Yeah.
-being here.
Can I say one thing about that also? The, the house that has the lot that is causing this, you know, I understand, you know, it, it's going to be hardship for them to change, but why not have them change it when and if they do decide to build on that extra lot, which they don't plan on doing for a very long time? So at that point, you could change, I'm sure the, the person there wouldn't mind changing to a lower number so that the lot in between that is not numbered right now could be, you know, seventy-one, seventy-three at that point.
Before, one minute, Dave, if you don't mind. I, I don't want the police chief to, you know-
I'm good.
You're good, okay. Didn't want you to feel, I didn't want him to feel left out, but, but thank you. David?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, you know, to Chief Barton's points, what he made explicitly clear is that there's no easy, right? There's, there's valid points from both sides. So I would just concur to everyone to please consider, there are exceptions to every rule. And, well, I appreciate the proactive aspect of it. If fire, police is going down, you see seventy-three, you know seventy-seven's coming. If there's a big red reflective sign on the driver's license, seventy-seven, you don't care if it's a duplex or it's a home. How do you admit a big red seventy-seven reflector? You know where it is. So, well, I get it, I think that to the resident's point, we're now creating a hardship for what may or may never occur. So I would agree with the resident in that case, that why would we then vote to put a hardship on a resident for what may never occur? And if that comes to be, then maybe we should be looking at that lot saying, this is the exception to the rule? We're going to make this a seventy-three A. But if it never occurs, then we may have just put a homeowner and residents through an annoyingly painful process unnecessarily. And I just don't want to, to pull that trigger, for me.
Thank you, David. Any other comments, sir?
But technically, they don't have to, doesn't have to be A or B, could be a E.
It shouldn't be A or B, right?
Could be a E or whatever else, right?
No, but we don't, they don't want the, what I, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard was, we don't want the letters, we don't, that's a, everyone's in agreement, we don't want a-
No, it's going to the letter. It's going to seventy-seven E to eighty-one E.
Identify multi-unit versus single home.
Yes.
Oh, 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 so that's just the night, yeah.
That's where you'd be at.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry, again, the road name mixed up with the-
I don't understand the sequence, even with the change. It doesn't, it, to me, am I missing something here? Or it's jumping from seven, it's going to jump from seventy-five-
Seventy-three to seventy-seven would become seventy-three to eighty-one. So-
Did you see the passageway, nine eighty-one?
It would become, if, if the change was voted.
But then it jumped, after eighty-one, it jumps right back to seventy-five.
No, seventy-five would be, so you'd have seventy-three and then in eighty-one, opening up space for a seventy-five and a seventy-nine to go in between.
He's got the-
So, the existing numbering, I don't mind a red road, is seventy-seven, eighty-five, and seventy-three. A lot that's currently being built on and another potential lot, okay? Seventy-seven would become eighty-one, which lines up with eighty across the street. Seventy-seven, which is currently not being built on, would be across from seventy-six. Seventy-nine, which is the number we need, right, is across, unfortunately, from eighty-seven, but I'm, or is across from seventy-eight, which lines up-
It's across from eighty-seven?
I'm sorry, I'm reading upside down. It's seventy.
Seventy-eight.
So that sequences across the street in that general area. Yes, our numbering was set up on a hundred-foot intervals. So when nine-one-one came to this town, we were told we had to number the houses. We used to have all rural free delivery addresses, did not have house numbers. And I worked with the people that set up the numbering back a long time ago as a young firefighter and says, we should number every hundred feet because that leaves enough room for things to happen. And the highway department went around with a wheel in the back of the pickup truck, and every hundred feet, they ticked off, and when they came to a driveway, they looked at their chart and said, this is X number a hundred feet from the beginning of the road, you are number seventy-something. Please call the selectman's office and let them know who you are and what driveway you're with. But there was a disconnect somewhere in the world, and someone started numbering at a hundred-and-fifty-foot intervals, which has caused a number of problems in town, which most of them we've been able to solve. But if this had been properly numbered when it was built, it would have been eighty-one or seventy-nine. So that's why there's a big jump between sixty-one and seventy-five, is because the driveway for sixty-one is over here. And the driveway for seventy-five is way over here. There's like three hundred feet between those driveways. Well, that's, that's what got us here, was someone started numbering at a hundred-and-fifty-foot intervals instead of a hundred.
Thank you.
And you didn't smack them down. I was not in this position at the time.
Any other comments? Which wishes the board?
I would only say to anyone who may be watching this whole discussion we're having, whatever happens tonight, and wherever the board goes, and again, just my opinion, but it doesn't mean the members of this board will vote the same if this ever comes up again because it's viewed, independent minds, as a case-by-case basis.
So, we have another hearing coming up after this, just a reminder, so we, if there isn't anything else to say, we're going to entertain a motion to do one thing or the other.
I keep, I keep hearing there's other solutions, but I'm not hearing any of the other solutions outside of the yellow, the red sign.
Red sign, or the, the numbering. So one solution could have been to make it an A and make the exception to the rule. And I said earlier about how every rule has, there's an exception to every rule. And that's why there are exceptions, not the norm. So, with the understanding-
Oh, the exception would, so it would be, that'd be an A.
Correct, so this would be the exception. So the new property would then be the one getting the A. And would then have to have also a sign with an A on it when they're moving in, and then you're not putting anyone out on either side. And the reason I say the exception to the rule and why I'm open to, to taking that exception is because I don't think this is something that Kurt's going to come to us for every day. This is not an everyday occurrence. It's, it's rare, we may never see this again. And we may never see it after tonight. And if we do, it may be just to have an A sign. And I don't like putting undue burdens on residents. And, you know, you know, we talk about, anything that would affect a homeowner's property and family, it needs to reach a really high threshold. If they're willing to, to work with the town, great. If not, I'm not going to be that guy. You know, to me, it doesn't reach a threat, that level of a threshold.
Well, especially, you made a good point when you brought up passports and everything else.
It all has to change.
Fine.
That is a-
It is a burden.
Or the seventy-five could be invited here for an open hearing and see if the seventy-five wants to be changed without that problem, then we go that road, no?
So three, there's no seventy-five?
No.
Seventy, seventy-five has not been assigned at this time.
Right. But it is there, it's just not assigned.
But they need to assign.
Yeah.
So they're going to have to know tonight, one way or another, I assume, whether he's being renumbered to eighty-one or whether there's going to have to be an A or something. Because I think they said they need to know because it's been filed. So they have to give it some number. So we can't just push it on the road, I don't think. I mean, they would know better than me if they have time, I don't, I don't think.
And when is this all going to start the process? Like, right away?
So if the board votes the change, whatever the board votes, we will execute, okay? The policy says that we will assist this citizen in the best way we can, and we've offered a number of things that we can do for the citizen, and that the official change of address comes in ninety days.
It's, 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 so we have to make a decision. My two cents, I, I really appreciate your efforts, trying to be, fix things, being proactive. And I certainly understand where you're coming from. You, you know, we kind of created this as a town, and now they're stuck with the burden of changing everything, even though I know we're assisting. It's not an easy decision, so what are the, let's call it for it again. We have to make a decision, we have another hearing.
So my, my, I'm not going to motion to approve it because I, I don't support it, but I would ask, if the other members are planning on it, because you're all, your own minds, I would ask you to consider, if you're going to vote in a majority, and I don't know how it would go, that I would ask the town do more. In other words, it, it, to me, it wouldn't be enough to just say, here's a letter you can send. I would want the town to get involved with every aspect of getting the passport, the fees for the new passports, the licenses, and working with the R and V, and not just like a, sorry, thank you, here's a letter. You know what I mean? There's more costs involved, there's so much more work and legwork involved in everything that would have to be changed. Not only that, but I'm sure insurance policies, mortgage notes, there's so much that'd have to be done. Now, I think the town, if the town's going to force a resident to do that, that the town needs to pick up more of that load. And I'll leave it at that. So a no vote, but I just think that that would should be a consideration.
But realistically speaking, we can only pay for it, we can't do it for them. So there's still the job, the work will be on the resident. We can only pay for it, that's right, we, we can't change that ourselves.
Unless it's a service the town can pay for, to provide, to do the work for them. And again, I don't know if there's an answer to that.
Or, or to your point earlier, David, which I actually liked, if, if, if we, if we agree with the resident, I think one of those red signs that the fire hand out is very important, and we should provide that sign. So.
So it looks like we're only, the, the new rule is that we, we like the As to be on a duplex, and so we're just amending that new rule.
It would be, it would be a singular exception.
Yeah. I, I understand, I understand the reasoning for the new rule, but-
I, I don't-
Right, but we're not going to, it wouldn't be amending the rule. It would just be making a single exception for this case, case by case.
So madam chair, I, I, what I would suggest is, is that, that we can kick the can down the road, okay? Mr. LaFlesch is right. Right now, no one is chomping at the bit to build in that, in this lot. I can asso, leave his number as seventy-seven, I can assign seventy-five to the new house being built, and if and when somebody builds in the remaining lot, then we're going to have to deal with it then.
I like that.
Mr. LaFlesch has indicated, and I'm sorry, I didn't think to look to see who owned this, this lot, and you've said that Josh-
Jonah Fosher.
Yeah, I know Jonah, he's a contractor, so he's done word. If Jonah owns that lot and decides to sell it and have something built on it, maybe the burden would be best placed on him to change his number to seventy-one. But I took it, as I've said before, and I'll stop now, is looking holistically at the numbering on the street and what houses were across, and that this would line those numbers up, which is a bonus to public safety.
And we, again, appreciate your efforts, I appreciate that this is what it's all about, right? hashing it out, working out a compromise. So the board wishes to take no action because of the proposal by Mr. Meskis?
Mm-hmm, I really like that. All right, so we would make the motion anyways to postpone it?
Do we need to make a motion?
We have first a hearing.
Recommend firstly, close the public hearing.
Oh, yes, that would be good.
And then probably take, take a motion to take no action at this time.
All right, so a motion to close the public hearing?
I-
Everyone?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Hearing's closed, I can't see the clock, seven fifteen?
I'm sure, I'd make a motion to take no action.
We have a motion? And second, any discussion?
Only a thank you to Kurt.
Thank you.
To the resident for coming in and for talking, but also to Kurt, that I think that Kurt has also shown, Jerry, if you're watching, and a, a, a nice concern for, okay, every case is, is different. We can manage to work things. I just wanted to point out that Kurt did a very good job with this, including right through this evening's meeting, so.
Yeah, thank you, Kurt.
Yeah, I'm good.
We're good, okay? We did, you needed, no, we needed another vote, we didn't vote. She said, David, you see, you threw me all off, David.
We didn't vote, but I thought we were just going to take no action.
No, we have to vote to take no action.
It's a motion to take, we have to vote on.
I second.
Right, and now we vote, because you're done talking, right, David?
You, you made the mo, you already made the motion.
Yes, you did. And she seconded.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, all right. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we got through it. Next.
All right, next.
All right, Andrew, take it away.
Next, propose house numbering change for ninety-eight Old Worcester Road. At the board's September ninth, twenty-twenty-five meeting, you were made aware that review of pending permit applications issued related to numbering at ninety-eight Old Worcester Road was identified with an assigning new street numbers. The board voted to set the public hearing date for both entries tonight. Notice sent to the homeowner and sent certified mail and received. We have scheduled the public hearing numbering change for ninety-eight Old Worcester Road for seven o'clock P.M. Our office and the Building and Inspection Services Department have spoke with the property owners at ninety-eight Old Worcester Road seeking their voluntary cooperation to renumber their home to one-oh-two Old Worcester Road. They have been cooperative and in agreement with the change. This request is in necessary, is necessary for public safety, administrative clarity, and compliance with municipal addressing protocols. Should you approve the change, we will provide the same assistance as offered to seventy-seven. The recommended op, is recommended the board approve the request and make the motion as presented below. Chairman should open the public hearing by reading the public hearing notice as published in the South Bridge Evening News and sent to the homeowner.
All right. Notice, it was dated September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five. Proposed house numbering change, public hearing. The Charlton Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven P.M. At the Charlton Town Hall, Meeting Room One, Thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton. Massive discuss and consider altering the address of ninety-eight Old Worcester Road. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing. Mr. Meskis? Ms. Meskis?
Hi, how are you doing?
Nice to see you.
Little interesting wrinkle here, um, this lot was a non-buildable lot until the, um, housing affordability bill was passed, and virtue of its size, shape, and date it was recording became a buildable lot. So, uh, currently, the numbers are ninety-six. We have a, they now buildable lot at ninety-eight, so we don't have a number to put there. And as Mr. Golus pointed out, and I wish to thank Michelle Picard, my administrative assistant, who's worked very hard in helping us with this process, spoke to the homeowner at, um, ninety-eight several times, and he has agreed that the numbering change is not a burden to him, and we will provide him with the same services as, uh, mentioned before.
All right, thank you. And I don't see anyone else here. The homeowner is not here, just.
He, we did communicate with him, and, uh, he said that, no, unless he needed to be here, he was not going to come.
Okay, well, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. David?
I was just gonna say, um, I would make a motion to, uh, accept the numbering change and extend, if the board agrees, our thanks to that resident for being willing to work with the town and undertake the change.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? We have to, um.
Have to close the hearing.
We have to close the hearing. I got this. Little help from my friends. All right, withdraw your second?
I withdraw my second.
All right, that was good practice, right now.
Motion right to close the hearing? Motion to close the hearing?
It was, I'm almost thinking, it's almost like when they change highway exits.
Can we have a second to the motion to close the hearing, please?
I thought she just seconded it.
I didn't, I did not hear, Basha.
She just seconded?
Yes.
You did see, I, maybe I did.
We will always be exit ten.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, Basha?
Aye.
All right, okay, the public hearing is closed now.
Motion to.
But to my point, for like five years, it always says, exit ten A, formerly.
Yep.
Exit ten. And that until the day you die, that'll be exit.
Look for Auburn, get on.
All right.
Hope for the best.
A motion, a second, okay. All those in favor? Aye, okay, unanimous.
I just think about the Amazon guy.
Got through it. Are you all stunned, Ms. Meskis? Have a good night.
There, there are other problems in the town that we will have to address.
But not tonight.
I'll wait until next year.
Man, all right. Have, you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
So back when you were numbering the streets, did it, and all of a sudden they got, they, they went to a hundred-and-fifty? Did you get a, did you get a horse with longer legs? Wh, wh, when, when did you do that?
I didn't do it.
Oh, 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 I thought you said you did.
Aren't you listening?
When the program was set up.
Oh, I thought you said you did.
It was a hundred-foot intervals, and some personnel changed in some departments, and they said, oh, no, it's a hundred-and-fifty foot. And I tried to reason with that individual. And we, we worked together. It's a collaborative effort between the highway department, assessors, you know, uh, keeping the fire and police, you know, informed of potential problems. We're working, there's a public hearing, continuation of a public hearing tomorrow night for a multifamily project here in the center of town. You know, street naming and all of that stuff have become, there is a huge book. I'm sorry, I take up your time. There's a huge book from, from Mass GIS that prescribes suitable numbering sequences, and how you deal with all sorts of things, like, we have houses, there are houses in East Brookfield on North Sturbridge Road that have Charlton addresses because their driveway runs through a small portion of Charlton into East Brookfield. But when you drive down the street, that's what you're looking at. You're looking at the address at the end of the driveway. We don't, we don't care that the house is in East Brookfield.
Yeah.
Nine-one-one cares because the right department has to go. But in the fire service, we'll go mutual aid. To anywhere.
Yeah.
Right? Police, and so Police Chief Solis, I just wanna make sure, who hears this? Police have authority issues. I did that, and it came out bad, and I sort of knew it was, but jurisdictional issues, right? Does, do the police have jurisdiction in East Brookfield? Totally issues jurisdiction. Yeah. Fire department. Personal issues. So this whole Mass GIS system deals with all of that. And I didn't, you know, we didn't come up with that policy out of thin air.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we worked on it, so. We, I can tell you that there's a house in Charlton that I have to go either into Dudley and Southbridge to come back in to Charlton, or go into Southbridge and Dudley and come back into Charlton. But nine-one-one knows where that house is, and we can tell them who to call. Because it'd take, it will take us a half an hour for the fire department to get there. So we can assign that through nine-one-one. And the other thing that's happened now is, how many people use this as their principal phone?
Oh, no, absolutely.
So copper phone lines, which are assigned to a physical address, don't exist. So you're going off of this.
I'm just gonna put it out there, because now when we talk about it, I am the exception.
Okay, well, that, and it's.
Right? That's like the thing, I'm gonna burn, ninety-six B. Yeah. Yeah, A, B, C, D.
Can we put, it should be another, the next meeting agenda.
Yeah, come, come back, come back, Mr. Meskis.
That was a big.
I'm gonna call you.
You, you might, you might have to, you might have to abstain.
I will, oh, yeah, I'll just.
If that comes up again, you might have to abstain.
Now that I think about it.
All right, I can, I think.
You are, yeah, yeah.
I am exception.
Interesting, huh? All right, I think, all right, Andrew, I think the only thing we're down to now is a Select Board member request for future agenda items, any? I didn't miss anything, correct?
We good?
Crossed everything off, all right. So next meeting announcement, so we are having a pre-town meeting, October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, six-thirty, at the Charlton Middle School, followed by the special town meeting, October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, seven PM, Charlton Middle School. In case you didn't realize this, you can see the warrant, it's on, it's online at the, um, at the Town of Charlton website. Um, the next regular Select Board meeting is November fourth, twenty-twenty-five, six-thirty PM, Town Hall, Meeting Room One. Uh, November schedule first and third Tuesday due to holidays, all right.
Just gonna put it out there, my daughter is having a baby November fourth.
What?
We'll poll the board on that day.
And it's, and it's a scheduled one, so it's gonna be.
Yeah, right now, that's a, that's, if you want to explain, it's just.
Yeah, uh, so right now, that one will be just if we have any, anything pressing. Uh, right now, we have our.
Wait, grandmother?
My second.
Stop.
We're having, we're having focus, focusing issues tonight.
She says she's a grandmother.
Sorry.
We have our, uh, tax classification hearing date on the eighteen, so the fourth will just be if needed.
Okay, so everyone understands the fourth may not happen. But, all right.
But if I'm not here, that's all right.
I, I, I. Motion to adjourn, someone? All right, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Got through this. Have a good night, everyone.
We are adjourned.